Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Homewood City Council for December 2nd, 2024. We're so happy to have all of you here. We have some exciting events occurring tonight. So, without further ado, let's go ahead and start with the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And is that's going to be...
Right here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harden. If you'll rise.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord Jesus, as we get through the Thanksgiving season and into the holiday season, we just want to be grateful for all you've given to us in this wonderful country of ours, the greatest country that's ever been. We want to thank you for the life you've given us. Thank you for Homewood. Especially, thank you for the citizens and the employees who make this city such a great place. We ask that you bless us and watch over us as we get through this holiday season. Amen.
The place of light, the intention, the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Appreciate that. I'd like to go ahead and call roll. Mr. Segras, if you'll call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walden? Here.
Here.
Alamon?
Here.
Wolverton?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Nels?
Here.
Andrus?
Here.
Harden?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Do we have a quorum?
I believe we do.
Okay. Great. We have a quorum established. Okay. The reading of the minutes from our council meeting, November the 18th. Do I have a motion to dispense with a reading of those and approve them as distributed?
Second.
Okay. I believe that was Counselor Alamon.
Yes.
And second by...
It was Wolverton.
Okay.
Sorry.
Counselor Wolverton, thank you.
That's all right.
Any questions on that? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes nine to zero. Okay. Next, we have the swearing-in of our newest member to the council, Jody Ross Brandt. Glad I got the name correct, that I didn't get with our mayor. So, we have Judge Marcus Jones, who fought traffic to get here. We appreciate it. I hope you didn't, you know, break any laws to get here.
I won't answer that.
Okay. Very good.
He's got a ticket he's got to go have to deal with.
Okay. And Jody, if you'll come forward and...
What we're going to do is here's the oath of office, so I'm going to repeat. If you just repeat after me.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Jody R. Brandt.
Right hand.
Not left.
I know.
Upside down. Like Trump.
Left hand. Left hand, right hand. There you go.
Right hand up.
Okay. I, Jody Brandt. I, Jody Brandt, do hereby solemnly swear in firm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will... Appoint, support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue to be a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue to be a citizen thereof.
And I will faithfully, honestly...
I will faithfully and honestly...
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Brian, we've got to get a new team picture at the meeting.
President Jones, after the meetings, everybody need a new team picture. We don't have Andy with us, though. Andy's not here.
All right. Mr. Brandt, did you have any comments before we proceed with the business? Any comments?
Honored and excited to serve the community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're happy to have you. So now we have 10. Okay? So... You're a voting member now. And I will just make a quick announcement. And I'd already made this announcement for Mr. Sims, taking over your committee. But, Mr. Brandt, I'd like to appoint you to finance and also public safety. Okay? So I hope you're amenable to that. Okay. And then we have board vacancies. This is like a domino effect here. So now we have an at-large park board opening. So do we want to...
We're going to leave that open until... We're going to open it and leave it open until, what is our first January meeting?
Which board was this?
This is part four.
An at-large?
It's actually Jody's spot.
So it's an at-large?
Yes. It's an at-large spot. And Mr. Brandt was supposed to be rolling off at the end of December anyway, so this would actually be when we open it. But the 13th is the first meeting. All right. Let's leave it open until January 13th, just because the holidays are in the middle of this and give people time to get through all that. So we'll leave it open until January 13th.
Okay. We'll leave it open until January 1st, 2025.
Yep. It's crazy.
Are there any other board vacancies?
I'm sorry. Are there any more, any other board vacancies that need to be addressed from any ward? Okay? Very good. Okay. Well, as we all know, we had committee meetings tonight, so we have lots to add for the agenda. So I will start, and please, if I miss something, please let me know. So, starting off, the consent agenda. Here are your additions to the consent agenda. 11-11-24, request for consideration of educational signage for Shades Creek Greenway, coming to us from Chris Sykes, Alabama Wildlife Center. 15-11-24, request for consideration of adding a streetlight on Oxmore Road across from Mayfair Circle. 04-10-24, request to install owl nesting boxes and signage on Shades Creek Greenway, coming to us from Counselor Andrus. Those are your three consent agenda items. The ones that we're adding to old business are as follows. These are from the Finance Committee. 09-11-24, request to surplus miscellaneous vehicles and items, coming to us from Blake Graves, Fleet Maintenance. 10-11-24, request to surplus a total 2,015 Ram 1,500, coming to us from Berkeley Squires. 12-11-24, request the mayor to sign a letter of engagement with CRI to perform an NIST-based security audit and penetration test, coming to us from Brandon Sims. 13-11-24, request to amend the 2324 Court Special Fund, coming to us from John Morgan. 23-11-24, request for consideration for sale of property on Greensprings, coming to you from me. And then we also have some items that are going to committee referral. 09-12-24, request for consideration of tax incentives at The Edge, coming to us from J.J. Thomas, and that'll go to Finance. And we have 10-12-24, request permission to remove two trees in the right-of-way at 305 Mecca Avenue, coming to us from Tommy Trim and Cale Smith, and that'll be going to Public Works. And then we need to move also 03-12-24, you can see that at the top of page two, we want to move that to other new business. So that is a request authorize the mayor to execute a change order for Kennelworth Drive and Ridge Road stormwater improvements. So we move that to other new business. Did I miss anything?
President Jones, just one small thing, and you may have mentioned this, so my apologies, on the consent agenda, 15-11-24, it's both an item in Finance and Public Safety, so I assume it's dropping both. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question. Yeah. That's both in Public Safety and Finance. So those are both going to be sent to the consent agenda. Yes?
On the contract, please. Could you... Mr. Brandon Sims' contract and resolution? I've sent you a message. It goes to consent. Just don't worry about it. Drop everything off.
Okay.
Just send it to the mayor.
That's fine. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. All right. Okay. Well, we have, I've added all of those. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda tonight?
So moved.
Okay. Counselor Alamon, motion. And Counselor Smith, seconded that.
That was me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Nels, seconded that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 10 to zero. Mr. Brandt made his first...
First vote.
First vote. Well, it was controversial until...
[laughing]
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. I mentioned those three items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Counselor Smith. And I did hear Counselor Nels that time, as a second. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to zero. That passes. Okay. Let's get into old business. The first item is 17-11-24, public hearing set for December 16th at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of amended development plan for 169 West Oxmore Road. We will carry this over for the public hearing on December 16th without objection. Moving on here, 09-11-24, request to surplus miscellaneous vehicles and items, coming to us from, as I mentioned, the Fleet Maintenance Director. First of all, a report from Finance. Mrs. Smith.
Yes, we heard from Blake and were presented with the items to be surplus, a number of vehicles, older vehicles. And the committee voted three to zero to recommend approving, surplusing the items. Motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
Okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us our first reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to declare certain property a surplus. It hereby is established and declared that the following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. The property described as surplus is attached as Exhibit A. It's a number of 2010 Ford Victorias, 2009, 2008 Ford Victoria, and a 2006 that's identified with VIN numbers attached. Also, a 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe. And miscellaneous items associated with those vehicles that are being declared a surplus by the city shop.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Is there a motion for unanimous consent?
So moved. Second.
Counselor Smith. And I think that was Counselor Andrus. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Segras.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. That passes 10 to zero. We already have the recommendation from the Finance Committee. If you have the roll call vote for the ordinance, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. And that passes 10 to zero. That's ordinance number 2919. Okay. 10-11-24, request surplus total 2,015 Ram 1,500, coming to us from Berkeley Squires. If we can have a report from Finance. Counselor Smith?
Yes, the committee heard from, again, Mr. Blake Graves, and he suggested that we have to surplus this because the truck was totaled and we're going to have it reclaimed by travelers. So the committee voted three to zero to recommend approving, surplusing the vehicle, and the motion was made by Mr. Harden and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
Thank you for that, Counselor Smith. Mr. Kendrick, if you can give us our first reading.
Yes, it's an ordinance to declare certain property surplus. It hereby is established and declared that the following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes and declared surplus property, 2,015 Ram 1,500 truck, the last four of the VIN 9468. If the mayor and the city clerk are authorized and directed to dispose of the Ram 1,500 by conveyance to travelers as part of an insurance claim settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Do we have a motion for unanimous consent?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Harden and Mrs. Nels.
No, it's Smith.
Oh, Smith. Okay.
[laughing]
You were pointing at yourself. All right. Harden and Smith. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Segras.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. And that passes 10 to zero for unanimous consent.
Motion to approve.
And we already have the Finance recommendation, so we don't need that. Roll call vote for the ordinance, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. And that passes 10 to zero. Ordinance number 2920. Okay. 12-11-24, request the mayor to sign a letter of engagement with CRI to perform a NIST-based security audit and penetration test. Report from Finance. Counselor Smith.
Yes, and this is actually going to be, the actually, the letter is going to be signed by Mr. Sims himself. And so we heard from Mr. Sims. We're going to do a little test on our IT systems to make sure we're doing all the things that we need to do. We voted three to zero, recommend approving, and the motion was made by Counselor Alamon and seconded by Counselor Harden.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Any questions or comments? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to zero. That passes. That's Resolution 24-171. 13-11-24, request to amend the 2324 Court Special Fund, coming to us from John Morgan. Do we have a report from Finance? Counselor Smith.
Yes, we heard from Mr. Morgan. He's just cleaning up a few small items from his 2324 budget. So we voted three to zero to recommend approving those amendments made, the motion made by Mr. Harden and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Any questions, comments? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. Resolution 24-172. 23-11-24, request for consideration for sale of property on Greensprings, coming to us from me. We have a report from Finance. Mrs. Smith.
Yes. Hold on, just one sec. We heard from the Lou's, who are purchasing the property, and voted three to zero, recommend first approving to declare the piece of property surplus. That motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Mr. Harden.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Kendrick, if you'll have our first reading, please.
Yes, sir. An ordinance to declare real estate as surplus is ordained by the City Council as follows, that hereby is established and declared that the following described real estate described in Exhibit A is no longer needed for municipal purposes. Section two, that the mayor is authorized and directed to execute a statutory warranty deed to convey the property to Sufon Lou Four and in consideration of the payment of Section three, the ordinance become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Do we have a motion for unanimous consent?
So moved. Second.
Counselor Smith, and I heard Counselor Harden down there. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Segras, for unanimous consent.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere?
Here.
Alamon?
Here.
Wolverton?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Brandt?
Yes.
I know. I was like, why are we saying it was a roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Everybody's here for class.
That passes 10 to zero. How many years have you been here?
[laughing] It was catching.
Mr. Brandt's looking at you while... No, I'm just teasing.
Present.
All right. Okay. Now we have the Finance recommendation was made, and if we could have the roll call vote for that, Mr. Segras.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yay.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Wow, we have an exuberant group here. Excited. That passes 10 to zero. And that is ordinance number 2921. Thank you. And that was for, that was for to declare the surplus property. We also have the resolution for entering into the real estate contract. That was already recommended by Finance, as you'll recall. So all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero, and that is Resolution 24-173. Now, we got through all the old business. Committee referral with a few of the amendments that we've made. Is there a motion to approve the committee referral agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Counselor Gere and Counselor Smith, seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. Okay. Other new business. 05-12-24, request to set a public hearing for consideration of assigned variance at 202 State Farm Parkway, Fast Pace Health. So for this, we need to set the public hearing. Mr. Kendrick, would that be the 16th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The 16th of December at 6:00. And do we have a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. Counselor Alamon, who was the second? Okay. Nels? Okay. Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. 06-12-24, request to set a public hearing for consideration of assigned variance at 817 Greensprings Highway, Baba Java. I've been excited about saying that all night. So we'll set the public hearing for also the 16th of December at 6:00 p.m.
The planning commission, we haven't even looked at the sign. The planning commission is...
We have to go to the planning commission.
Hasn't come to us yet. We're starting tomorrow.
That'll be in January, I believe.
If even, I mean, you know.
We're close.
We've got to...
We're close.
Yeah. And then it goes to committee, goes to council again. It's a committee meeting.
All right. And do we have a motion to set that? Okay. Counselor Wolverton, sir, second.
Second.
Okay. That's Counselor Gere. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 10 to zero. We'll set the public hearing. 07-12-24, request for consideration of an ABC 040 retail beer on and off premises and 060 retail table wine, doing business at Super Oriental Market and Red Pearl Restaurant. Mr. Segras, we've received letters both from Fire Police, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President. Move to approve.
Okay. So Counselor Wolverton is making the motion as to having no objection to the issuance of the license. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Counselor Gere?
Is, just to clarify, they've, is this new to them? Have they sold?
I don't think they have. I think this is taking over.
Okay. Yeah. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes ten to zero. Oh eight, twelve, twenty-four. Request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period November nineteenth through December second. And this, no, you have one more time. Mrs. Smith, right?
I know. John tried, John tried to jump me. He thought he was gonna, he thought he was gonna go ahead and take over. And I told him he got to wait until January. I'm having so much fun. Why would I wanna give this up? I looked through the vouchers and had some questions for Kelly, which she answered well and to my satisfaction. So I would make a motion to approve the vouchers for the period of November nineteenth through December second.
Okay. Then a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Nelms? Any questions? Thank you for your service. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's ten to zero. Resolution twenty-four. One seventy-four? Is that right? Okay. All right. And then we've got zero, three, twelve, twenty-four. Request to authorize mayor to execute a change order for Kennelworth Drive and Ridge Road stormwater improvements coming to us from Cale Smith. If you can provide some information here, that'd be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Southeastern Silcoating has been working on Kennelworth Drive and the Ridge Road Stormwater Improvements Project. They started a few weeks ago and they've made it almost to Hillwood. They're on South Forest and Edgewood right now. An excavation that they had made was larger than they thought it was gonna be. And so there was a utility pole in the way and they needed Alabama Power to come out and hold it. And the cost of them doing that was three thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars. And so that's the amount of the change order. That's not marked up or anything. And they, the contractor doesn't intend to mark it up. So they're just gonna pay Alabama Power directly. So there is seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the budget. The bids came in about fifty thousand dollars under budget. So this change order would increase the value of the contract to six hundred seventy thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars. So we're still significantly under.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Are there any other potential increases or unforeseen areas?
Absolutely.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, in, in construction, there are always unknowns and, yeah.
Okay. So that, that amount was thirty-six ninety-seven. Okay. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. That was Counselor Smith and Counselor Andrus. Made that motion. Any other questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's ten to zero. That passes Resolution twenty-four, one seventy-five. Did I miss anything? All right, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, welcome to Jody. We're very excited to have you. We'll even get you a nameplate at some point. Make you official.
You gotta pay for it, though.
I promise I'm not. It's okay, Bo. I wasn't expecting it to be here tonight. It's okay. All right. Just a couple of things coming up with the holidays. The first is a breakfast with Santa that is September, I'm sorry, Saturday, December seventh at Sanford. And you can see the Chamber website has some details on that. And then on December eighth is the Sixth Annual Walk for Claus hosted by Homewood Santa Claus Society. They'll be starting at the Grocery Brew Pub at, I think the walk starts at one o'clock. I don't know when the festivities actually start, but sometime before that. And then, as we said, Christmas parade and the star lighting will be on December tenth. Council should meet at Fire Station One at five thirty to get loaded up for the parade. And then lastly, some good news coming from the fourth floor. I'm gonna read, Cale gave me this information, so I'm gonna read part of it because otherwise I'm gonna get it wrong. In November, FEMA completed its audit for the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. Since Homewood first joined the NFIP twenty-one years ago, our CRS rating has always been a nine, which is the lowest rating that we could get. This year, our goal was to become an eight, effectively reducing flood insurance premiums by ten percent for the residents, if you live, happen to live in a floodplain. Over the past year, Shoal Engineering and our certified floodplain manager, Sherry Williams, and the planning tech, Hunter Martin, were able to put best management practices in place and lower our CRS rating to a seven, thereby reducing our flood insurance premiums, or the residents' flood insurance premiums, fifteen percent. So that, that really is a pretty big deal, especially if you live in a floodplain. So congratulations to the fourth floor and thank you to the fourth floor for getting that done and helping our residents with the flood insurance that a number of them have because of Griffin Creek. So if you see any of those people, tell them thank you.
Thank you.
There's one. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right. Next, we have, we'll just go down the line. Counselor Gere?
I was gonna announce that Arts Council meets next Tuesday night at six P.M., but I bet they will not do that. And I'm not sure when their meeting will change to, but we'll encourage them to be at the Christmas parade. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Alamon?
Yes, I just wanted to express my condolences to Judith Frey, whose mother passed recently. She's done a great job. And I just wanna make sure that she knows that we're thinking about her. And I just hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wolverton?
I wanted to announce that the West Homewood Christmas tree lighting is going to be Friday, the sixth, at six thirty. Santa and hot chocolate and some caroling will be involved. Also, West Homewood had the seventh or eighth annual turkey trot on Thanksgiving morning. So it was a good time. Lot of just informal, hanging out and spending time with neighbors and building community. So we have just the one item for Public Works. So we'll set that after. Did we set public safety? Okay. So we'll set that for after Finance.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Counselor Wolverton. Counselor Sims?
Here. Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, I just wanna, you know, welcome Jody, Brandt, the team. Excited to collaborate with Jody and service Award III for the remainder of our terms. Also, as far as special issues, we have one item for old business and two new items.